Alright, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It's Wednesday, October 1st, 2025, 10:07 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. My left Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioner Emily Claus. County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings. We have no livestream, but the meeting will be posted and written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed work. Action may be taken at this meeting. First item on the work session is Lodging Tax 2026 Priorities Follow-up.
Thanks so much, Chair, and members of the Commission. At our last Lodging Tax Advisory Committee update, there were some great questions asked from Commissioners, and I appreciate Staff Ellen for working those through. And we have a presentation that we'll go through and answer questions. I think it's also great that this presentation, we have Commissioner Fornier here, can also provide some perspectives, as I believe he is the county's representative on the LTAC board. So with that, I'll hand over to Ellen if you could start with an introduction and take it away.
Thank you, County Manager. Morning, Board. Ellen Massey, Management Analyst. Like County Manager said, we have a presentation today regarding the Lodging Tax Fund and then the Advisory Committee, also known as LTAC. So just to provide a brief overview, the Lodging Tax is gathered by the state and is from locations such as bed and breakfasts, motels, hotels, campgrounds, RVs, things of that nature that individuals would spend the night at. And then those funds are given to Thurston County and can be distributed for tourism, marketing, promotion of special events, and operations and capital expenditures for tourism-related facilities. So we have the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, also known as LTAC, and that is a committee through RCW that is made up of five members. We have to have two representatives who are from organizations that receive Lodging Tax money, two organizations that are able to contribute to the Lodging Tax money, and then we have one elected official, Commissioner Fornier, for the Chair of the Board. So the Thurston County timeline that we have been working on thus far is that we open applications to organizations in the county, starting in November through December. I gather all of those informations and consolidate that data for Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and then we bring that to them in January. We have two meetings. The first meeting tends to be basic overview. If there are any updates to the scoring sheet, if there are any priorities from the Board to bring forward, and then dispersal of those applications for review. The second meeting then is the LTAC comes back and reviews those applications and provides recommendations for funding levels of those applications.
Can I, can I stop you?
Please.
So on the Advisory Committee.
Yep.
Can you go back a little? So it says each municipality operates independent of each other. Does that mean that each city has an LTAC committee like the one you're describing? Because they all have their own hotels, and they all collect that. And so each municipality, well, Yelm, Tomwater, Olympia, Lacey. So when you say, so when we have, so this is ours, and the elected official would necessarily be a Commissioner?
Yes.
It could, I believe the RCW says an elected official.
Okay, but a county-elected official.
Correct.
Because this is just ours. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And just per perspective, the cities are, they have a lot more money in theirs, like Olympias and Lacies. I don't know what the figure is, but it's like millions, I believe, or over a million.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm probably off-topic, so maybe I'll wait till we get.
Could you go back one slide to me? Thank you. So once the LTAC group has provided recommendations, then those recommendations are brought back to the Board for final approval. And that happens generally in February. And then from there, I will create the contracts with the awarded applicants for them to carry out their, either their event or the marketing for the year. And then we are required to report back to the state in May through JLRK. And so that's for the prior year's funding. So in last May, it was for 20. For this May, it was for applicants who'd received funding in '24. So to speak a little bit about the reporting metrics that are asked for by applicants, these are the state-required reporting metrics that are included in our application. Overall attendance, the number of people who will travel for 50 miles. Of those people that'll travel for 50 miles, are any of them from other states or other counties? If they travel for more than 50 miles, are they staying the night in Thurston County? And then additionally, if they're staying the night in a paid lodging environment. And then if the number of lodging nights, the number of paid lodging nights resulting from your proposed activity. So if it's an activity that covers multiple days, what's the total night? Or the total heads and beds that would be expected to be had for that?
So if you're standing up a new event, what do people do to answer those questions?
That's a great question. I think from my experience that organizations can work with, can find comparable events that have happened and using some of those metrics that they have used in the past, working with experience Olympia Beyond is an opportunity. And these are the predicted and actuals. We only report on the actuals to the state. So the predicteds are supposed to help the Lodging Tax Advisory Fund make those recommendations, but we only report on the actuals that are received from.
But in the application, in the vetting process, there is space in there where they do predict or they do report on how many they've had in the past. And so some of it is predicted. But then there's also, there was also consideration given from new events, because I think if I remember correctly, it was this year or last year, there was a desire to also help see new events. So there were a couple where there was consideration given to the fact that they were brand-new ones. Where it gets kind of, has gotten a little, I don't know, not dicey, but like nuanced maybe in the last year or two is, you know, like sometimes you get crossover jurisdictions. So you get an event that is based within the city of Olympia that is getting Olympia LTAC dollars. And the jurisdictions have tried to figure out ways to work this out. And I don't know what that, what the best scenario is. But like you get an event that's downtown Olympia that is then applying for Lacies, applying for Thurston Counties. And then a lot of times Thurston County has distributed within the municipalities, and the municipalities then weren't at points distributing outside of their city because they just, you know, theirs gets gobbled up so quick. And some of the, like Lacies, a lot of it goes to the RAC. Olympias, a lot of it goes to the Washington Performing Arts, just every year they have an obligation. And so we did talk with them about wanting them to be more open to unincorporated events requesting money and if they can justify it, giving them consideration. There hasn't been a lot of that, but they have said to me that they would be open to it. I just haven't seen it. So there was consideration in the last, this last year where you got, it was weighted. And if it was an event in unincorporated Thurston County, they did get more points. And that did kind of change the way some of the funding models were or funding outcomes were. And so this last year, some of the events that were, are within the city and had come to, you know, expect the funds over the years, they didn't rank as high. And some events that were outside and unincorporated Thurston County got ranked higher. So that kind of did change a little bit. I think that there were something different groups that kind of felt that.
Amy, could you switch to the next slide, please?
To me, that makes, that makes sense.
To your point, Commissioner Fornier, this is the scoring sheet that the Lodging Tax uses. So it reflects the points that you were just saying, that there are some South County.
I said it right.
No, you did. Yeah, absolutely. That there are, there is a section that says in Thurston County or South, unincorporated or South Thurston County gets additional points. And then this year, we've added priority, the projects, priority projects that you all identified at the last, to have additional points as well.
Yeah, our goal is to get heads and beds in the places that seeded money into this fund. And if those heads go into beds that are in Olympia, it doesn't accomplish that. So we wanted to make sure that it's weighted appropriately.
I guess you could go. It's a lot of, you know, art, not a science sort of thing. But I guess you could try to analyze, like, so the county, so let's say cities have 75% of the money, or three times much money as Thurston County. I don't know what that number is. And then, but then do they have three times as number of the applications, right? Like is the proportionate? Is it, because like, let's say, let's say all the events were in cities. And cities have more money, but they're still getting, in that instance, you'd want to put some county money there to help support the events because we're not getting as many applicants, or at least proportionally. So just kind of seeing like.
And we have.
The proportion of the money versus the proportion of the events that need support, like that'd be an interesting thing to look at. But anyway, yeah.
Do you look at the, you know, the South Sound Block Party? If you look at Harbor Days, those are all ones that, you know, the Process of the Species, that they've benefited from our LTAC dollars. And, you know, it could be, I think, easily argued that people that come and tend to those events probably stay in some of our rooms. But we tried to put, you know, a scoring sheet together where we could at least try to be somewhat objective in the, you know, the way we determine things.
So the South County tip that you were describing, that's the third line there, 20, 20 points out of 100.
And these, just as a reminder, that Lodging Tax monies can be used for organizations as well. So it doesn't have to be used just for events, which we do talk about. But there have been, you know, chambers of commerce or the EDC or things like that that bring in money or help with the promotion of the wonderful events and the wonderful activities or locations to see in South Thurston County as well are able to be funded through this program. So it's not always just events, it's through those tourism facilities as well.
Do you have the next slide?
So just as a recap, you saw this slide at our last presentation. This was the 2025 recap. We had 23 applications and six.
One more thing.
Please.
Can you go back a little? That last line, is this a Board of County Commissioner Priority Project? Is that, so we talked, and you weren't here, which is why we brought this back for another discussion. But we were, we talked about like having some kind of community impact, like factor, kind of murky. Is that what that is?
Correct, yeah. Brady, could you do two slides ahead? That one is new for this year.
So that wouldn't have been there last year, that last five points? It's like a bonus five points or something? Okay, and that could be if we set some type of goal that says historic events or events that are around water or something like that, that would be.
Yeah, whatever the Board, I'm sorry, too forward. Yeah, thank you. So this is a summary of.
Brass banjo events.
So this is a recap of that conversation that we had for the last Board at the last meeting. And the countywide impact events were Procession of the Species, South Sound Block Party, Regional Athletic Complex, the Fairgrounds, and South and Unincorporated Thurston County. So those ones would be the ones eligible this year for the additional five points, as it stands.
Can you go back a slide now?
Sure. Yep. So the 2025 recap, we had 23 applicants. 16 of them were recommended for funding. And things that we included for 2025 was asking for Thurston County to be, have the logo as a sponsor for all events and facilities. And then working with Susan and PIO for putting that on the website of organizations and events that have been funded by Lodging Tax so that people are more aware of them and will go to them if they're on our website as well. So then, looking forward, 2024 applications, we're still expecting to open in November. And we've had lots of interest already, gotten lots of emails about being on the list for when those do open. The Board.
A session or pro session? Pro session.
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can't unsee it.
So the Board had proposed 334,084 of that to be given for the FIFA Fan Zone contribution, and then 250 of that for general applications that are received.
So maybe a good time now, Chair, to just update the Board on where the FIFA Fan Zone conversation is at. At our last three cities meeting, Lacey has committed to working to fund their portion of the Fan Zone. Tomwater has agreed to work with the LTAC, their LTAC Subcommittee, to fund their portion, which is different than the other larger cities and county. And Olympia, like now, working that through to determine if their support among their council will do the same. We, the City Manager thinks they may hear back in the next week or so. But obviously, we all have an understanding that we need the city of Olympia to be part of that in order to move this forward for a number of different reasons. Anything you'd like to add, Chair?
Just that if the city of Olympia, for some reason, dissipated or whatever, like before, I have a potential contributor that might help. And I don't want to talk more about it right now, but don't pull the plug without talking to me because there may be one more avenue to try to move forward on our budget that we had laid out. Two things that I wanted us to all be aware of is, I think there is some confusion in the public about this effort. You know, I'm seeing a lot of chatter where people are just saying, why the hell is the county spending $84,000 on a FIFA Fan Zone when they're talking about budget cuts? And I understand why, you know, I understand that LTAC dollars, where they come from, how they can be used, and why this would be applicable. But the general public, they don't, they don't look beyond the headline to really understand that. So if we are going to do this, I think it's important that we do our best effort to ensure that at every step of the way, we're communicating the elements needed to like convey that this money, where it comes from, that it's, how it's used, why we're using it this way. It's not a fun part of the story, but I think we have to continue saying that again and again and again and again. And then the other thing is, like, I know that I probably forwarded the article, but the President is signaling or threatening to remove the FIFA tournament from Seattle. And I, you know, I think it's, you know.
It's not safe there.
Oh, yeah.
Just from Seattle.
Sure, yeah. Well, I mean, I'm not going to debate the, if it's valid, his statement. It doesn't, you know, they don't appear to have to be. But they are real statements that he's making. And he's, you know, if, you know, I just, I want, not saying it's right or wrong. I, you know, because I don't think I should be, I don't know, whatever. It's a statement that's being made, and I like, if we're going to make an investment like this, I, you know, we should just be aware.
Well, I mean, we'll know that at some point. And if it's probably, I mean, obviously, it's not going to happen. If that happens, and we're in a really good position because we just made the decision to increase our, so we're not hurting anyone by allocating this. There's still more money than there's ever been in the past, even with Fan Zone, because we doubled the tax. So we have that on our side that makes it think this easier. And then if that doesn't manifest, goes into fund balance, right? And it'll go back to the community. I mean, it's not going to be wasted or lost in any way.
But it is good, especially in light of what the county's having to go through. Similar to the courthouse purchase, we have to clearly communicate, often at a high level, why there's a difference, why there's different funding opportunities. That although LTAC goes through to the county, it is dedicated for tourism efforts. And this is deemed to be a significant one. So I see our Chief Communications Manager in the back and.
And the program they put together is like that app that will drop, you know, like they will come in. They would have that app that we would have them directed all over the county, that there will be world travelers in the hundreds of thousands over the course of the season that would travel through this area. And we'd be able to say, go check out, you know, the various things on the Bountiful Byway. All that is totally valid, and I think there's a lot of potential. I, you know, I just, I want to be totally transparent about some of the other issues that would, you know, that are causing me some heartburn.
And every single community that's participating is using that same funding source. So there's no general fund dollars that'll be deployed from anyone for this effort. It'll be restricted dollars. Yep.
Can I switch the conversation back to LTAC?
Yes.
Thank you. So are you open for general questions now?
Yeah, of course.
So I'm wondering, have there been conversations with the jurisdictions about aligning our process? Not that I'm aware of.
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of, but Commissioner Fornier.
There's been attempts to have those conversations, but there's, it is very disjointed. You know, the each LTAC group has their own kind of vision, and there's not really been a way seen for, like pooling funds doesn't really make sense. The kind of the general request has been if, if organizations or, you know, events within your jurisdiction are going to be allowed to request funding in our jurisdiction, then there needs to be reciprocity. Like that has all been made very clear.
Okay, so ongoing conversations is what I'm hearing, or that. Okay. Yeah, I think it would be, it would be good to have those conversations with the rest of the jurisdictions, especially, right, with some of the events. Again, when we're talking about, you know, countywide community impact, it's not just in one jurisdiction. They're usually going through the rest of the jurisdictions to kind of try to make themself as whole. And having those communications with the rest of the LTAC. I'm not talking about pooling funds. I don't know if that would be the way for LTAC, but I think aligning our process would be a benefit to the applicants and to the community.
A lot of those conversations happen before the Economic Development Manager moves positions. A large issue that the body that came together last year discussed is that the city of Olympia uses a specific software that they pay for through their LTAC dollars. And that system is not something that the other jurisdictions have the access or the funding to.
Or wanted.
Yeah. And then also a large portion of the conversation and the issues that stem from is that the cities, their budgeting and application starts much earlier, where we have to wait until we know that the allocation is happening. That's why ours happens in November, where theirs happens earlier in the year. So there is also an alignment of budgeting that makes alignment of the process a little bit more difficult.
There was acknowledgement from applicants as well that our process is much simpler than the other jurisdictions' processes. Like coming up with like one clearinghouse or one, you know, one uniform process didn't seem like it was a worthwhile.
People, we can respond, we can take a look at that. I'm not aware of previous conversations, but now it's staff who's handling this. We can reengage and touch base and take what was mentioned as some good background to figure out where we go from there.
No, I think it would be good, especially, you know, I guess I'm thinking about, you know, our fair. And in previous years, they weren't going for it. And now that we have an actual fair coordinator, you know, they've started to kind of broach into those other LTAC areas. And I just want to be sure that at least like our, you know, there is that communication going on. And so I would appreciate that. Thank you, County Manager.
Are you saying, yes, Wayne, are you saying that like the fair is not allowed to apply for city of Lacey LTAC?
They are, and they should, they should be applying.
So, but you were saying there wasn't reciprocity.
There needs to be reciprocity. There hasn't always been. But like Olympia will apply for Lacies for some things. And then, you know, like Andy's like, oh, we should, RAC should be applying for Olympias. Because like, so there are some like kind of sore places when these, when these come up.
What, I'm just trying to, like, what is exactly your concern, Commissioner?
Smooth that over, right? Like, I think having the, or understanding that our applications are different, that are. It just doesn't make sense that there's all these different processes for each of the jurisdictions. It doesn't make sense that the applications are different, yet we're, you know, supposed to be sending the same information and data over, right? I just, and so I'm like, let's engage in conversations. And it seems like there already have been some conversations, but I don't see why we couldn't continue.
Very far, because like the Olympia one is very onerous, and they wanted, they were.
Got to fit their software.
And we were like, okay, Lacey was like, yeah, we'd never do what you're doing. And then, you know, we kind of said the same thing. You know, and like, and as we, in my mind, as we were growing a larger pot of money, the emphasis would be on then growing the amount of events and tourism opportunities in the unincorporated, like focusing on unincorporated Thurston County to make sure that we're bolstering events and tourism in those areas. And, you know, that's where I would see our investment best spent.
Any additional slides, Ellen? There is no action on this side. This was just reporting back out based on questions Commissioners had.
Yeah, well, that was a lot more information than we went over last time. So I appreciate it because I've never, never sat on the LTAC and didn't really know much about it. So this is more than I've ever known before. So it's good.
Yeah, of course.
You know, like the people that are on, you know, like the venue owners in unincorporated Thurston County, and they're going to have a keen eye to what they think is going to put heads and beds in places like their facility.
Because they could give the perspective that, you know what? Procession's going to put more people in my facility than some small South County thing. I mean, they could say that and feel that way.
Yeah.
Based on what they've seen. Okay, well, that kind of evens things out a little bit in terms of actually trying to meet the goals. All right, so the next topic up is the biennial budget. It's just a budget kind of follow-up from all the different meetings. I'm going to leave it to the County Manager. We're kind of shaping the goals of what we're trying to accomplish in the short-term time frame.
Yeah, so we would hope to have the details of how all of the decisions the Board has made that all shakes out, but we still need some more time to make sure all the numbers are adding up. What I'll say is that the creative work that the Commissioners did, maybe we can go ahead and put up on the screen, the.
Can I just say upfront, like, you know, like the, all the different decisions we made to try to help the budget, they're all have a different character. They're all like, they're different kinds of things, kinds of things that we did, which creates a lot of complexity for the overall matrix of the budget. And that's where, like, I wasn't, you know, I'm, I think we just need to make sure that we walk through this so that we can all speak from kind of the same understanding and starting point, right?
If it was straight revenue, it would be easy. You just take that revenue.
This tax, that tax, this tax, that tax, that would be simple. But we didn't, our decisions weren't quite that simple.
Right. And so we want to make sure that we give our budget team time and space to calculate all that down to the dollar. And we look forward to bringing something back to the Board next week that will go over the targets. But that being said, the work the Commissioners have done over the last few weeks has been substantial. And when we look at the decisions and we break those down, we started with acknowledging the deficit of 36 million based. based on, uh, the real indications from the forecast and the expenditures, um, those that are known and those that are still being worked through in executive, uh, accession discussions, et cetera. That is the dynamic. We then took that, identified targets for offices and departments. It resulted in a 26% reduction, which resulted in 125 million balanced budget for the general fund. Uh, and it's extremely impactful to departments and offices. So from that communication out, we know departments and offices came forward and, uh, did a whole day of presentations. I believe you're in here from about eight fifteen, you know, five o'clock in the afternoon, working through each office and department. We appreciate all that hard work from the departments and offices budget staff. From that conversation, uh, the board initiated identifying revenue and additional capacity options. That's in that bucket, we talked about some of the, the conversations that have taken place about HP 2015. And the total of those conversations equaled 17.2 million when we walked out of that session. That was the win. I think the, what do we call it, Summer?
The win list?
The win list that we sent after those, uh, from those concepts. And then board gave individual direction on those items. Uh, in the process of that, we also looked at, uh, an additional 2.3 to cut expenses, which is important. That's not added revenue. That's just, uh, how do we get expenses by an additional 2.3, which gave us the 19.5 million. And that's where the board gave two sets of direction. The first one was to take the 10 million of the 19.5 and just spread it across all offices and departments. That's the work we're doing now, uh, because again, it's not just revenue that we're spreading. Wouldn't it be great, Summer, if it was just revenue?
Yeah, it would be wonderful.
We could just come back probably like in an hour and, uh, report out on that. But it is a combination of some revenue, um, that can relieve the general fund. Like HP 2015 is a perfect example of that, that that revenue doesn't go to the general fund. It goes to public safety sales tax, but we're looking at how does it relieve obligations to the general fund. And a lot of it is reduction in other areas to, uh, expenses. So that was a great decision the board made because that then takes everyone's 26% and adjusts it across all offices and departments. And then the board looked at, um, a 9.7 targeted restoration. That was the chair's proposal that came forward and we received direction to go ahead and implement that back. Um, that again achieved, uh, a balanced budget. We're still working through those details. The board's clear communication of budget concerns and results in offices and departments, positive actions to slow down spending created another dynamic. And again, this is the hard work that the organization is undergoing together. Uh, I will just go back to the 17.2. We appreciate the creative ideas and solutions brought forward by our treasurer, by our auditor, um, by other offices and departments about how we can look at that dollar amount. And so we identified back to the influence reduced spending that's above the projected fund balance, which Summer has given a range from, uh, over just over 4 million to hovering about 10 million. That the board made the decision to correct the budget staff and county manager to look at anything over the 5 million. Apply that to additional added capacity. If we can move that little bar to that last line. That it takes up every inch of the screen. There we go. So we're looking at how that plays out and the board agreed to some targets of what those dollars would be, uh, how those dollars would be restored back to departments. And so that's the last part of the pyramid, that the, the, hopefully it's a wonderful top to all of this work. We hope to come back next week, um, to talk to the board about how those decisions adjust everyone's targets. And then we would be recommending to the board, uh, new targets so that we can build the base budget, preliminary budget for 26 and 27. I will say that that's the detailed work that Summer and the budget office is going through. Because it's, again, if it was all just straight revenue, it'd be very easy and straightforward. But it's reductions to reductions that we're working to make sure that they have now, the board was identified.
The, at the bottom in bold, is that, so just, I mean, that's kind of the shorthand, but it's 19.5, right?
Yes.
Plus five, so it's a 24.5 reduction to 36. Okay, is where we're kind of stood.
Yes.
And that's where the, as I understood it, then that last piece would be closed by the remaining cuts that were left. After all the reductions of the cuts.
Right.
Not needs to add up to like 11 and a half million dollars of cuts.
That additional five, just a, a clear caveat on that is if that's realized.
Right.
Projecting, but we can't.
Optimistic scenario, but, 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 but with a, with a, an actual basis to, yes, it, it is the way it's tracking.
Yes.
Other questions on this kind of breakdown? Commissioner Grant?
I have some questions. Um, so we identified targeted target for offices and departments. I don't know how else to explain it other than like, this is not, um, uh, that this is not the same as, you know, this, the sheet that looks like this that you guys put together, but you have each of the three, you had, you had, uh.
The red and green sheet.
Yeah, um, uh, you, we had listed out 26% and then, uh, as a target reduction, then 12, and then eight, then 17.5%. And I thought we had gone through, my understanding was that we had gone through and decided that the, the overall reduction exercise would be around 18%.
That's what the 10, after applying the 10 million, that's kind of just a shorthand of where it brought the 26% cut to 18 across the board. And then we started targeting down from there.
With some like, uh, public defense and the sheriff.
Yeah, a couple were just not quite in that formula. That was just the general reduction, the general across the board reduction.
So 18%, then would be $26 million. And so you're saying, so I'm, I'm just trying to get us back to why we need 36 million. So the, the 36 million is 26 plus 10 more million. Right? So, um.
36 million is the 20, the 26%, again, with the, with the caveats of sheriff and public defense, the 26%.
Uh, equaled up the 36 million dollar gap, if it were just applied across the board. Yeah, the 36 million, really the difference between the general fund projected expenditures in 2026 of 160.
160 versus our per revenue of 124. Budget, we, everything just, if we were just cruising along maintenance level with all the increases in COLAs and new contracts and public defense, like we would, and we, and we just had the money, you know, just sitting there, next year's budget would have been 160. Public projecting revenue of 124. So that's the 36 million dollar gap that had to be closed, either by raising up that revenue, which we did some of that, bringing down those expenses, we did some of that. We're just trying to even it out. So we have a balanced budget. Um, but like I say, it's a whole, it's a whole range of diff, I was trying to go through it with Summer last, yesterday evening. And that, because they're just, they're all different types of decisions we made and they all don't kind of play, play, it's not quite as easy. What I wanted to ask is that middle, uh, where it says, you know, we did 17.2 and then it says, identified additional cut to expenses, 2.3. Can you give me an example of like what that would, something that that would be in that bucket?
Yeah. So what we're looking at there is, um, there are some items that we're still verifying that would result in that, that, that space there. I think.
The interdepartmental.
I think part of the reason we felt comfortable with a little bit of, I would call that range, or a little bit of wiggle room to look at how do we materialize that? We will spell that out next week when we go through it.
Like there was a C part item, I know, that was kind of being worked through and could yield some additional. We were just trying to maximize, you know, the revenue that we could potentially realize through our decision making so we can reduce the cuts.
And I think what, what we are asking is because the conversations are very targeted. For example, the, this, uh, central services reductions, those are very targeted to specific offices and departments. It's not a reduction that we can just spread across. There's a lot of detailed work. The budget team has to go through and back that out. There's going to be a shakeout of how all of these decisions materialize, or maybe some of them may not, which could cause, uh, the number to change just a bit. But ultimately, the board's decision making has significantly changed the conversation from what would have been a very drastic impact, looking straight from what our projected, um, expenditures were, just under 161 million, to what our revenue was bringing in. That's, that's the structural part we've been talking about for 10 months and how the county has got, has realized this position today.
Okay, a couple more questions. Uh, all right. So I'm following, uh, I, my number's a little different, but, uh, the 24 million, um, that, you know, I think for me, I've been trying to just figure out revenue. And so the 24 million is fine, but I guess the last question I just really want clarification on is that where we, you know, the, the 124 projection, uh, revenue that we think they're going to bring in. I, I, um, you know, we received 129 in revenue this year, or 24, 2024. And so, um, so what we're projecting that in the out years, we're only going to bring in about 124 per year. And is that just?
Somebody want to speak to that?
Six, we were projecting about 127.9 million. And that was based on roughly $52 million in property tax and 27 and a half million dollars in sales tax. And then the, um, all other roll up of revenues into general fund were just under $44 million. And that's keeping with, uh, diverted county roads at 1.5 and also, um, a road levy shift to 4.7 million.
And that's for 2027. What about 2026? Oh, for 26?
Yeah.
So 127.
127.
Right.
So, okay.
It's not the same number. Um, I've, I've, like, when we say to get to a balanced budget, it's a couple million dollars difference. So I just want to make sure that we're utilizing every, all those.
In terms of that original 36?
That was based on estimates from a few months back, right? So we, we knew that that was the target and the number is always changing depending on how the revenues are performing or any other known assumptions that we have for expenditure. So the, the guidance has been get as close as you can to the target.
Yeah. And the targets are always moving and that's why it's important that we have a reserve set aside and we don't spend every dollar that we have and we don't obligate everything that we think we'll ever have because there has to be wiggle room because we don't know what six months from now is going to look like.
The takeaway here is look at the way that this is organized. The board has made big decisions, a 161 with the expenditures and the revenue coming in at 124, 25, 127, whatever that might be, the moving target, but that the board acknowledged that there was a deficit. This board is actually ahead of, this is, we're not unique in this position in the country right now. The state is going through this. The county was ahead of these projections. The state came back and said, we're having the same issue. Everybody's having this issue. So the board recognized that 36 million dollar deficit and started to take action over the past eight months. That's a big win. That's why it's at the top. That's why it's the big bar. So resetting the balance budget to 125, that was a hard exercise, taking that 26%. That frustrated a lot of people and you guys got to hear a lot of information from about that. So then the board took opportunities, the next, the third bar down to try and find money, revenue, to try and soften that blow. So you balance the budget once with 26%. Then you tried to soften the blow by finding more money, 17.2, and then finding additional cuts at 2.3 to further soften the blow. And figuring out how to soften that blow is the measured givebacks. And then you've balanced the budget again a second time, but with less burden. So these are big wins. The board should at least take a second to acknowledge the hard work that you've put into minimizing the impact to our offices and departments. This is, it's a big deal. So thank you for that work. There's more to do. And that's where we're at, is we need to be able to get these numbers tight so that you can feel comfortable making these next decisions.
I guess, you know, I guess for me, I, um, I just need to go back to, it's hard for me to, um, figure out how to, you know, make this next step if, if, you know, we hear the number moving, right? 124, 125, 127. Which number are we trying to get to?
125.
Right. But I just heard, so 125, and that would then leave $2 million extra left over.
So you asked a very specific question and she answered a very specific.
She answered 127.
Yep, with what she knows now, but we're basing this, all these decisions were made at a moment in time. So you've got snapshots, but people's hair grows. Like times change, like things are different. It's, it's the way the projection budget works. And if it turns out that we have an extra $2 million, that's awesome. But we want to be conservative. So we want to make sure that when we're doing this budget practice, we can still make it balanced. But totally heard, Commissioner, you're right on. Things change.
And I think what's important is there's still an issue in 2027. So we put a lot of our focus on 2026 and when we look at 2027, because of the continued costs of, and expenses, Summer, what's the number you're tracking for the issue in 2027?
Um, it was still sitting at about, um, 9%, so just over 13 and a half million dollars.
So that number's been around 14, but go, go with that 13. Say it again?
13 and a half.
13 and a half. And that's what, what we're doing is we're focusing our, after balancing 26. And it's, as you said, Commissioner Ford, it's important that we realize that there is still a 2027 issue. What we're hoping is that sales tax performs higher, the economy kicks back into place. But the, the, the work that we're doing, there's still, I, I, we need to make sure that we clarify, there's still that component. Now, we believe the board will have some options this time next year when we're looking at the 2027. And, and, and there's other measures that we can talk about. Once we set the maintenance level budget and get the preliminary budget off and rolling so that it can be accomplished by steadily.
Okay. And, um, I guess for me, I'm just going to ask for a roll up of, you know, when we say, um, additional 17, 17.2 million, I, I'd just like to see that broken out. What are, what adds up to 17.2 million and then additional cut to expenses? What adds up to 2.3 million? Um, and then I already know the measured givebacks because I, I've, I've put that down. But, um, measured givebacks are what Ty proposed and what Carolina proposed, correct?
There are two layers, I guess.
Yeah. And so we've got the first day and the second day.
Mine were the nine and a half, mine were the, um, 9.5 on top of the 10 that we did evenly. And then Caroline is related to the additional, that, that next piece where we have the potential.
His board accepted those.
Right, right. I know, I got that. I got those numbers. That's what I'm saying. I have those numbers. I just need to see the breakout for the 17.2.
Yeah. And I have those all written down. I mean, in my notes, I can share. It's like, you know, we had in for a suite, public defense implementation, uh.
I have that right here.
That's what the 17 two is.
It's just different numbers for me. So I want to make sure that I update my numbers to reflect what you guys have. Okay.
Yeah. That's a good question. We want to make sure.
And then, so Monday or what, what's the next point? When, when are we going to come, come back together and hope to tackle this next item?
Tuesday or Wednesday. Yeah. We will give the board an update and the organization an update. That's going to be a big discussion that people are interested in.
And that's Tuesday during agenda setting or are we just going to do it next month during board work set like one?
Would be either Tuesday during agenda setting or Wednesday during, do we have a board work session? Yes. I think we just need some more time, I don't, with the team to chart that course.
Okay. So just in terms of where we're at right now, any questions more? All right. Your items is up next. Anything we need to progress? Yeah, commissioners check in at 1:30.
Do we have anything on the commissioners checking at 1:30?
Want to cancel the commissioners check in?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything on it?
There's nothing on it.
There's nothing on it.
Just pending items?
Yeah.
My child wants.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. I'm okay with that.
I got something I want to talk to you guys about, so. Right now then?
No, not till then.
Is that okay then?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. You just made it very, very happy.
All right. As long as you accept Emily's.
As long as you accept Emily's foster dog.
Representatives from the Sheriff's Office, there is a police dog available, a Belgian Malinois.
I'll take a vote on this.
Yes. Can we make a motion that Leonard has to take her?
Rachel's new dog.
I delegate that to Josh.
Okay.
All right, where's your?